Okay, call committee to order. We're gonna open up with a prayer. Heavenly Father.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll try this again. Okay, Heavenly Father, we just paused this for a moment, first of all, to remember that Pearl Harbor, something seventy-nine years ago, a lot of loss of lives and a lot of those servicemen aren't alive, but their families are, and we just pray for them, the sacrifices. Pray for the, our citizens of our town. This time of year, it can be a lonely time, so I just pray that you encourage them. Thankful of the report that Ron's wife got today on our scam, rejoice in that. I just pray you give us all wisdom, make the right decisions that's best for the community in this, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of our which is one nation, one under God, with the love of God, justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Maris.
Yep.
Beverly.
Present.
Pepper.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the amended agenda for your approval. And I think the one thing that was added was the planning commission meeting on the third. So entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Make that motion, Mike Bart.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Pepper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Fett.
Yeah.
Mar.
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the approval of the November nineteenth regular council minutes. Any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
The move.
Who was that?
Really.
Okay.
Sex.
Do I get a second?
I'll second, Larry.
Okay, roll call.
Mar.
Yes.
Fett.
Yep.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Okay, have before you the bills to be paid, and Cheryl, there was another list added.
Yeah, I was emailing everybody today.
Okay, so you have two pages from both sides. Any questions on those?
I have no clue.
What was the email that you sent today?
I'm sorry?
The only email I received from you today was the COVID update.
It was about four-thirty this afternoon when I sent that over. Sometime late afternoon. I don't know why I sent it.
Oh, it came from that. Instead of from Cheryl, it comes up as Anne.
Yeah, just scan.
Bring your mind until about five-thirty tonight.
Well, at least you got it.
You need a little time to look that second page over. Taylor, did you ever get it?
Yeah, I did. I found it, yeah.
Okay, you wanna take a little time and look it over if you want.
I had a quick question for Cheryl. The end, Bob Aaron, his consulting fee, is that for all the servers in the, in the, our system?
Yes.
Everything, please, okay.
What was the golf cart repair? Was it like new batteries or something in it?
Um, Jesse.
Both clutches went out on that, and we got two new tires that were also dry rotted.
I had a question for Val for the park department. Can you hear me, Val?
Okay.
All right, the keys, you had the return keys and everything. Did you get them all back, or are they still? I know in the past, we've had issues with return keys.
Yeah, we got, um, on the boys, we only got two back, and they gave us one that looked like somebody made it. So I don't, I just charged twenty-five dollars, because they didn't turn them back.
How many?
One.
Okay.
They didn't turn it back in.
They got fifty dollars out of seven.
Yeah, we returned fifty out of seventy-five.
Okay.
Any other questions on the bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pay them.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, not Eric Bassett.
Okay, second.
I'll second, Larry Ridgeway.
Okay, roll call.
Pepper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
Fett.
Yeah.
Okay, next is a notice of a public hearing, December the twenty-first, in the council chambers at six P M. to hear a request to rezone nine thirty-six East High Street from commercial to residential.
I don't think the address is correct.
You don't?
It's a new address.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um.
Old Mill Road.
No, this is something different.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Do you, can we, are they wanting to pass this as an emergency so they can get building, or?
No, no. They're not, yeah, public hearing on a totally different thing.
Okay.
Public hearing, so it's just. Okay, let's see, a housing council met on the eighteenth, notes were in your packet, any questions on that? There's quite a few, which is a good sign. Had a chance to look at those. Okay. Uh, planning commission meeting was held December third. I don't think I got that in my packet. Oh, there it is, okay. So any questions on that? Okay, council committee reports, finance committee met November thirtieth to discuss fire and EMS budget. Do you have a report on that area?
Pretty much exactly what it says. We just met with Scott, went over some questions we had about items in his budget, and everything seemed to go well, and we just wanted to talk with him before the third reading of the appropriate.
Okay. Okay, minister writers report.
We are done with leaves. I don't think anybody's got any out at this point. The recycle lot, on winter hours at this point, gets open Thursday, one to six, and Saturday's nine to one. What would you think about just shutting it down in January and February? I know last year, when we had one of the big snows, it was basically closed anyway.
Close it.
If we have an ice storm or something, yeah, we'd open it back up.
Okay, everybody feel the same? Be all right?
I'm okay.
I see a lot of hands bobbing up and down. Um.
Uh, any questions on the critical infrastructure grant application? You won't know anything about it, but if you have a question, I'll try to answer it. We're hoping to get that submitted before Christmas, rather than wait until January.
Our Santa's going to get it. Just our points and everything.
This doesn't go by points. Uh, the state accepted our pre-application, so they said, go ahead and submit the real thing. It's still not gonna be a slam dunk, we get it, but at least we made it past the first hurdle, whatever you wanna call it.
Their criteria, what do they use to decide whether we get it or not? If they don't do points.
Uh, depends on what we submit. There's a whole bunch of different categories you gotta fill out and explain and all that stuff. But yeah, this doesn't go by points.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know how this gets decided. You just have to present your case well, I guess, so.
Whoever's got, yeah, whoever's got the better line of bulls is gonna be the one who gets it.
Yeah, kind of, so anyway.
Are the engineers thing on top of everything that we need to submit a good report to them?
They've been working with Mommy Valley Planning as well.
But nobody's dragging their feet on it, well, sometimes we get that, I mean.
No, not on this. Pete just sent them some stuff. I think it showed up in today's email. So at this point, we've gotten everything the Mommy Valley Planning that they need. So, once he gets a draft around, we can look it over, go from there. Uh, the storm sewer project has started, kind of. It's, oh, maybe it's run into some issues already. But anything, the biggest thing for residents is this is gonna be a long drawn-out process. For car, the detour is not that big of a deal. Semi is gonna have to pay attention. I guess today they did wipe out one of our stop signs at Spencerville and Arthur. So we'll get that replaced tomorrow. But there's really nothing we can do about it at this point. One lane's gonna get torn out, so they can't keep traffic. We did have a water main break today, so that added to the fun. Got, guys got that fixed about six-ish. And I guess otherwise, I'm gonna have an employee off indefinitely. Won't go into detail on that. Otherwise, if you got questions, I'll answer them if not I'm done.
Can you go into detail about that? Unless you prefer not to.
Well, it's an employee who's spouse tested positive, so he has to stay home.
How long kept? You're talking fourteen days since she tested?
Yeah, but based on what you said, it might be back next Monday.
Okay.
But then if he comes down with it too, who knows?
Okay. Any other questions for Kent? Okay. Um, solicitors report.
First thing I have is ordinance two thousand twenty dash nineteen, a third reading by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of Hicksville Village. I'm making.
Okay.
Who seconded it? I didn't catch that.
Mar.
Okay, roll call. Or any questions at all before we vote? Okay, roll call.
Who is the second mayor?
Mike.
Mike Bartlett.
Okay, I got it. All right, that's it.
Yeah.
Juan.
Yeah.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yeah.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
Next is the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-two by caption only, an ordinance amending the flood damage reduction program for the village of Hicksville, Ohio. We've been submitting these to whoever Kent's contact is. The next meeting, there'll be a third and final meeting on that, and I think there's just a couple of small changes that they've asked us to put in there. Anybody has any questions about that?
Did they just adjust? Did they just adjust limits, or what's the, I guess, why?
You'd have to ask.
It mainly been definitions.
Definitions.
And we've sent them, what, three versions? Each time they send, okay, here's what you have to adopt, so we send it to them to review, and she always ends up with one or two more things to change. So there's two more, and I think they were cross-references from one part of the ordinance to the other, that she says, okay, if you get those two with the right numbers, we're good to go. So, we've been sending her everything they've asked for, but she keeps fighting and stuff afterwards that she skipped. So it's noth- nothing real major, that FEMA has changed, it's mainly in the definitions area.
Next is first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-three by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance, and I think you need this now, Cheryl?
Yes.
It's more COVID money.
Going to declare an emergency. Yep.
I move suspend rules.
Sorry. I'll second it.
I'll.
That was Troy. Um, roll call.
Bassett.
Yeah.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
The second, third readings of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-three by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
The move.
Okay, Beverly made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Larry.
Ridgeway, okay, second, roll call.
Pepper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
Fett.
Yeah.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
And then last, resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty, a first reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the final plat of Old Mill Road subdivision and declaring an emergency. For reference on this, when back, and I think Bruce is still on the call, but when they originally did this, they filed the plat of the road, but they didn't file, kinda like what we did out in the industrial park in case somebody wanted a bigger lot or a smaller lot when they were considering industrial. Well, now that they've kinda shifted gears and they're trying to plat it and get the zoning changed to residential, they presented it to planning commission, it's been approved, so we just need to accept the plat, which will allow Bruce then to go down and record it, and then those old auditors lots, or whatever they're from, will then now be lots in the Old Mill Road subdivision. And then the next thing we'll do is change the zoning on those lots, individual lots, to residential with the exception of where the chiropractic office already is, it'll keep its zone that it already has. But that's why it's an emergency, so that we can get it down there. It's been sitting there. After the planning commission acts on it, we have a limited time to do it, and then that'll allow it to be recorded, and then we'll deal with the zoning, and everything should be in order then for, hopefully, when he's got somebody ready to build a house.
I move suspend rules, Beverly.
Okay, second. Ooh, second, and I heard two.
Taylor.
You got it, okay. Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Fett.
Yeah.
Mar.
Yes.
So then, second, third readings of resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty by caption only, a resolution accepting the final plat of the Old Mill Road subdivision and declaring an emergency.
The move.
Mar.
I'll second, Larry.
Larry seconded, roll call.
Fett.
Yeah.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mar. Mar.
Oh, yeah.
Beverly.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
That's, that's all I have, mayor.
Anybody got any questions for our solicitor, any other issues?
May I interrupt just a moment?
Oh, come on.
Who do you want to sign the Mylar? It says clerk of.
Cheryl will sign as the clerk of council.
Can I run that down, Cheryl?
Yeah, I'll be here at eight A M.
So I won't, but I'll get it down there. I'll be busy on the.
Yeah, just either call or holler through the front door because we're locked up.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Any other discussion for Troy? Okay, thanks, Troy. Um, the department heads, police chief. He left us. There he is.
He went to the podium.
Yeah, you're up.
Zimmerman in my office, and he would like to speak about these signs. All right, even though these say Williams County and Edgerton, they would not say that. They would say that Hicksville Police Department or the Defiance County Sheriff's Office or both. But he would like to talk to you about these signs and what he is doing. So I have him as a guest, and I'm gonna turn it over to him to give his spiel. Uh, yeah, I'll have you come over here and set my chair here.
Everybody else knows what he's talking about. I don't.
I don't.
Greetings, your honor, the mayor, the police chief, and the councilmen and women. I'm Jerry Zimmerman from Edgerton, and I'm not used to public speaking, so please bear with me. I've been based in various police and sheriff's departments in Ohio and Indiana, seven so far. The police chief, Mark Denning, invited me to give a short talk to the mayor and village council. The Hicksville Police and the Defiance Sheriff's Department serves putting their own lives at risk to protect you and your family's lives, and also your residential and your business property. By the way, my son-in-law Brian is a police officer serving in Haynesville, Ohio. About a year ago, he received a special condemnation, combination, excuse me, for saving a woman's life. My wife prays a lot for police officers. The owner of signs twenty-four-seven is Mark Worthington. He has a machine that makes ten of those signs at a time. He will do these signs with appropriate village, city, and county at his cost of ten dollars each, including the yard sign mount. He normally receives sixteen dollars for the sign and its steel mount. This is the tenth one he has made with this lettering. I have one in my yard. I am not asking the mayor and the council to purchase these signs for the residents of Hicksville and Defiance County. I'm only asking for advertising and promotion of this project in your Hicksville newspaper. I carefully researched the cost of a similar sign from other sign makers, and your residents would save about five to eighteen dollars each, buying from Mike. I left a couple business cards with police chief Mark Denning. Classic signs in Auburn will do ten for twenty-eight dollars each, and fifty for fifteen dollars each. I thank you very much for the privilege to speak to all you.
Okay, anybody got any questions? Or he leaves there?
I'm still, I'm still long.
Work, work.
Okay, I think, uh, he just did this recently in Bryan, the city of Bryan. I think the city of Bryan purchased some of the signs, uh, and what they did is, Jerry, is, do they not? They haven't yet?
They haven't advertised or promoted yet.
Okay. I think they're, I think he's looking for, like, putting the signs up, like, maybe like at the village limits, showing that the village of Hicksville supports law enforcement, is what it comes down to.
Right.
Uh, and the sign, the guy who makes the sign, Michael Worthington, out of Bryan, Ohio, he's willing to make the signs for ten dollars apiece if you guys wanna consider this, I think is what he's looking at.
Okay, what's your thoughts?
I cannot see a sign. Can any of you guys see a sign?
Yes. I don't see a sign, but I kinda like see it in person.
Do you have? Is that one at your office, Mark?
Yes, I do.
How about we put this off until we all get a chance to sit by your office, take a peek, see what you got?
Okay, that's fine. Yep, we can do that.
Know about the rest of them, Mark, but I'm completely in the dark because I can't, I can't see a sign on, on the computer and, and, and it just hit me. I, I don't, I've never heard about this, so I'm kind of at a loss, so I would like to put it off until we can get a chance to get to your office.
Yeah, absolutely, that's fine. I agree.
Thank you.
So. At each entrance in the village, what would that be, one, two, three, or probably about five or six signs, I'm guessing, if you hit every entrance, so, okay.
Yeah. No, I got more to talk about, so I just wanna get him on this one, so.
I need to speak to you about something. I'll wait.
Okay, uh, so, uh, obviously, we talked about, Ken talked about the detour stuff. Uh, we are having problems with semis coming in from the west, right, and coming down these side streets. Uh, Kent, did you find anything out Friday, or anybody get back with you from ODOT or the construction company about getting more signs?
ODOT was gonna try to get something done today, but I, I haven't been out.
I, yeah, they.
I'm looking to, to see if they got a sign up yet or not.
Okay, they haven't done anything, 'cause I drove out there about three o'clock. Unless they did after three o'clock, I didn't see anything. Uh, so the issue is, and I've already addressed this with Troy, I think, the first day that they closed the road down, the second day. Uh, I cannot take any enforcement action on these semis coming down these side roads. Uh, one is, the detour sign and barricade set inside Indiana at one.
Uh, one is the detour sign and barricade set inside Indiana one-on-one and thirty-seven. So once they're past that point, it's a disobeying traffic control device, but that violation occurs in Indiana. We have no signs between the state line and the village limits. Okay, once they get past those signs and they get up to Chicago Avenue, they're free to go left, right? Uh, because we have no truck signs that says no trucks allowed. There's nothing marked local deliveries uh, on these, on any of these signs and no signs on the side streets. Uh, so I talked to Kent Friday morning about getting more signs. You know, let's see whether the construction companies have, have more signs to put out or ODOT. Uh, Kent's got a very limited number of signs. Uh, so, uh, one was, uh, I said, I think we need something up at K Spear Miller and State Route two because that's our last point of no return. Once they get past that, they're not coming to any of these FWT Wholesale House, Jim Schmidt, uh, Five Acre Mill. Uh, you know, if they're not going there, they're gonna make it all the way up to Chicago Avenue and there's no place for them to turn around. Uh, but if we had those signs back at that intersection, I think if they know they're traveling all the way through, at least they may be able to turn around FWT or Five Acre Mill because there's room there. Not to say that those companies don't want them on their property either to make that turnaround, but we have a place to turn them around, cause once they make that side street, we have no place to back them up, so we have to send them on, on forward, right? Uh, and we can stop these trucks and tell them that they can't go that way, but I have enough, no enforcement action to take on them. Uh, and that's not gonna, going to do us any good either. Uh, so I'm looking, you know, to have more signs. There's three orange signs that say, once you get past the village limits on two coming into town, it says roadwork ahead. Then it's got thousand feet, roads closed, five hundred feet, road closed. And when you get to Chicago Avenue, it just says road closed, it's setting it on that part of, uh, for high street, the roads closed. And then no through trucks beyond that sign. Uh, problem is, if a truck goes beyond that sign, then I have a violation. But if they're making a local delivery, I don't have that, or if they're making a local delivery in town. So, you know, I'm thinking we need to get some signs that says, uh, no commercial vehicles or no semi trucks, uh, with the exception of either local deliveries or, uh, only. So that way, uh, we have something to cite under. Uh, so.
Mark, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Uh, Kent, usually in, in, uh, contracts, or ninety-five percent of contracts, will tell whether the contractor is in charge of shutting the road down or the state, and it will also describe how they want it shut down. Uh, was that in Hohenbrink's contract? Do you know?
He's supposed to maintain traffic. He's supposed to decide how he wants to do it.
So then we need to pump on him in the morning and tell him to start rounding up some signs to cover our needs.
I ended up by him last week. He goes, well, that's one that set the signs, so he was gonna get with them, but I also contacted ODOT. They thought they were gonna try to do something out there to State Route two in Case Beer today, but evidently they didn't get that accomplished either. So I got, I can check again with Nick in the morning.
Okay.
So I was looking at two at the building, you know, just past Case Spear Miller, the village limits start coming into town. Right? We had signs also there that says, you know, something about no commercial trucks unless, or local deliveries only or local traffic only. You know, that way, once they get past that point, it's inside the village. If they continue on and then head down the side street, I've got a violation.
Well, Mark, you got, you gotta be careful about what they say because the way the law's worded is, they have to be in compliance with the uniform sign code. So you can't just have them say, uh, they have signs, like, uniform signs for every situation. And I think the one that needs to be done is the white and orange one that says road closed. No, no through trucks, local deliveries only, or something, I think is what it says. But it needs to be, you can't modify those or whatever because then that becomes, um, there's a defense under the statute. It's kinda like if you don't have your stop sign at the right height or something like that, that's an automatic, uh, defense to any violation. But they should, whoever the contractor is or ODOT or whoever, obviously they should, they have a better knowledge of that than I do, I'm sure.
Yeah. Uh, and then, of course, we're getting the speeding on all these side streets, so, uh, thank you for the citizens that's contacting us, authorizing us to sit in their driveways along these streets, so to help modify or monitor traffic. Uh, so that'll be done, but, yeah, so we, we, we don't have too much of an issue. You know, we've got the trucks that's coming in from the east side, uh, we're fine where the signs are at. It's just the west side. I got stopped a truck today that come out, FWT, just dropped a load and was heading to Bellevue, Ohio. Uh, but he came out and headed east on into town. Uh, I, I spoke with FWT and they're gonna do their best to make sure that they're letting drivers know when they exit, uh, they have to go back towards Indiana. The valid detour route. So.
And just for hearsay, I know the township is concerned with their county roads and what they've been trying to build. Um, they get a lot of truck traffic on their county roads, Case Spear Miller and, and roads of that nature, um, they're gonna have issues, so they wanted help from maybe the county for endorsing, um, I talked to one of them the other day and they have a lot of semi traffic going, going down their road. It's, it's getting heavy. So they're concerned about their infrastructure.
Well, see, that got brought up when I talked to ODOT. They said, well, the only choice they'll have is they ignore the one that's state line. Is when they get to Case Beer, they're gonna either go to Case Beer, run into low overpasses eventually, or turn onto Spencerville, or they'll take Jaredville and come up that way. They said the township and county might not be excited with that.
Right.
So I said, well, they can deal with that. I mean, they're, even if they wait till state line, they're gonna take state line to Spencerville and get into town. It's just, somebody's gotta catch them back at one-on-one. I said, Indiana, but they probably won't give the hoot about Hicksville.
If we come down hard on the truckers, uh, right now, but this job's gonna go on for quite some time. If we come down on them hard right now, the word spreads amongst the truckers. It don't take long for them to all find out that that's not a good place to go. Right?
It is, but I don't have any enforcement action on any of these trucks. Right now, they can run these side roads legally.
Right, but soon as we, if, if, if we can, uh, uh, you know, make this a kind of a rush order and just some things straightened out, uh, Kent said he would get with Nick in the morning and, and, uh, also the state, so if we can get something done here, uh, before the middle of the week, so that everything that, every move you make is legal, and then you come down hard on them, uh, as far as stopping everything that moves, I'm not saying you have to give them all tickets, but stopping everything that moves, uh, the word will spread very quickly through the trucking industry.
Oh, and that's what I hope, so.
Yeah, I'll give it in the morning.
Okay, any other questions for Mark?
Okay.
I just got a couple of things.
Oh.
Our generator was actually delivered today, couple days early, three days early. Excuse me. So, uh, Darren Brand will be out here tomorrow to look at some stuff out here tomorrow and kinda give us a, a timeline. Uh, everything and how he's gonna shut the power off and, and, and things like that when they go to shut, to switch everything over. Uh, so he'll be out here tomorrow to look at that. Uh, and then the only other thing is I just had an officer return from COVID quarantine that had direct contact with somebody. So, that's all I got.
Okay, any other questions for Chief?
Thanks, Mary.
Our chief Kramer.
Eric, I don't have a lot. Uh, just like to thank the businesses and residents of Hicksville that have helped with the, uh, Children's Christmas, HFD. People don't help out over, uh, there's over a hundred kids. I'm not sure on their exact count, it changes daily. Well, over a hundred children are gonna be helped for Christmas.
So, and then they'll, they'll take over their buys and let us know what they want to do.
Don't mark, turn your, turn your mic off.
Yes. The mayor of the city of Bryan.
Charlie, can you shut him off?
You not only state to the councilman, I, the police chief, but as you.
Cut him down before he pulls the stickney on us.
Yeah. I was trying to call him up to the office.
Okay. There he's off.
Your decorations look nice, Scott, out from the firehouse.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Tyler. We call him Chuck. He put those lights up and trying to be festive. Uh, equipment's all fixed up and doing good. Uh, the air pack should be here in January. And I'm not sure on the compressor yet. And the truck order is in the works. We're waiting to get everything signed from the, uh, manufacturer back and then we'll go to pre-construction and get that rolling.
Good.
That's all I got. Any questions for me?
I think I asked you before, Scott, is that an ISX motor in that truck?
No, we get Mack chassis with the Mack engine in it.
Okay. But it's high horse?
Four fifty-five something, I think. I'd have to look at the specs to be sure, but yes, it is high horse.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Chief Kramer? Okay, I see Val's still on a, uh, report Val for the park.
No. We're just clogged now.
Okay. Um, any questions for Val? Okay, um, Cheryl, your report?
So we have the fund status report, and if you notice, they gave us more COVID money. Um, we have the November utility income tax collections, um, July's mayor's court report, and you have a letter from MediaCom with, um, some new changes they're making again. The very last thing would be, that's actually from the mayor. They say, um, eight hundred number that you can call in if you need to report mask issues because the Defi, uh, Defiance County Health Department is not taking care of that right now. The state is. And that is all I got.
Cheryl, I got those numbers right here?
Do all of the God's same guidelines apply to that additional COVID money?
Do what? I don't know the details of it yet. This is what was, uh, after the deadline, the ones who didn't use their money went back into the pot and then that got divided out again. And so that's what this is.
Hey, Cheryl, do you know when the deadline is to turn that money?
I don't.
Okay.
Have to find that from the auditor. Unless Troy knows.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I just ask him because that's the rule I have. That'd be spent by December thirty-first and then my other funds have to be spent by the end of fiscal year in July, so.
I'm assuming it's December thirty-first. I'll verify for sure.
I would say we have more time because we just got it. But we've already allocated our usual money on the thirty-first of December, so that's been taken care of. Okay, any other questions? I see the, we're only one percent down for the year, so that's pretty good. Any other questions for Cheryl? Okay, and she mentioned about Defiance County Health, cause I, I give you my, what I had to email to Jamie Gurken, and the phone number's there if anybody complains to you about masks. And I did make a call to the state, so I did report that situation. Um, it just kinda, it was COVID is still going up. I got a chart from, it's a zip code four, three, five, two, six. And from the last three weeks went from, if I can find it here, hundred and fifteen to two hundred and sixty-two, so almost doubled in three weeks, so we're not out of the woods yet. And I just got word today, it sounds like maybe December fifteenth, they might start giving out the vaccine. So I'm gonna, we have a meeting Wednesday, the health department. I'll get a little more information on that, so it's on its way. So anything else that needs to be brought before this council?
I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
I'll second, Larry.
Okay, I guess I got the gun there. Okay, who made the motion? I didn't hear that.
Eric.
Okay, second.
Larry.
Okay.
I suppose you had to ask that, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'm surprised you had to ask that question.
Yeah. Okay, roll call on adjournment.
Asset.
Yep.
One.
I guess.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thanks.